I would like to call the Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a brief moment of silence for the two of our fallen heroes, Drexel Max, Jackson County Cork Processor and Officer Cody Allen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Morton?
Here.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Here.
Commissioner Henning?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Roar?
Present.
Chairperson Crowe?
Present.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening and those watching from home. Tonight's agenda consists of Item One A, the minutes from the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission Meeting. Item Two, Site Plan Design Review and Alternative Development Standards, S P D R dash zero one dash two four dash nine zero three four for Timothy Lutheran Church. Item Three, Presentation of the Downtown Master Plan, Item Four, The Business, and Item Five, Germany. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. I have a motion from Commissioner Howe. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Stokenberry. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The applicant has requested the continuance of a public hearing for Item Two, and I'll ask for a motion to continue Site Plan Review with Alternative Development Standards, S P D R dash zero one dash two four dash nine zero three four to the Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission Meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stokenberry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Graham. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and those items have been continued to the Planning Commission on Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The next items on the agenda are Agenda Items Three, the Downtown Master Plan. At this time, I will ask for the staff's presentation. Miss Eber.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks Commissioners. Kara Elbert with the City of Blue Springs. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development. I was the project manager on the Downtown Master Plan, and I'm gonna do a presentation for you all this evening. If you have questions along the way, please feel free to stop and ask, but I will get started on this presentation. So, to start, kind of the planning process that we entered into, so the City of Blue Springs put out an RFP for Planning Services back in May of twenty twenty-three to engage with a consultant to prepare an update to the city's previous downtown master plan that was completed back in two thousand and seven. A contract was entered into in August of twenty twenty-three at a city council meeting, and then the purpose of engaging in this planning process was because the previous planned goals had been realized and conditions had changed. Thus, it was time to pivot and look at new possibilities for redevelopment within downtown. So, the plan document itself is broken into several sections that are outlined here. Those include the purpose, the planning process, overall program agenda, area concepts, strategies, and then the last part is implementation. So, the plan, obviously, it starts with identifying what the purpose is. The primary purpose is to ensure that downtown is supported and connected, but what does that mean? Understanding the potential changes in land use, identifying strategies to improve mobility, safety, and parking, and imagining aesthetic improvements to strengthen the area's image. So, the planning process that went on throughout the entirety of the project started with the creation of a technical committee that was internal staff with the City of Blue Springs. There were some stakeholder interviews and meetings that were set up throughout the planning process. Those started in October, and then there were some in December, and then there were a variety of other stakeholder meetings that were held over Zoom or over the phone. There was also an interactive map tool and survey tool. There were three different open houses and as well as a design studio that were held. And you can see here on the side, there were six major events. A hundred and fifty-plus people attended those events, and then it kind of gives a picture of how many people visited the project website and made comments on the interactive map. And this is a picture of, from the design studio, the bigger one right up here, the top right, and then there was a variety of pictures from our other open houses. A majority of these meetings were all held in the gathering space kind of in City Hall, and then the final open house was here in February, and it was held in this room. We had really good turnout for all of the meetings that we had and got some really good feedback from different sects of people within the community. A big part of this planning process that was really important to the city is hearing a variety of groups, hearing what they wanted to see in downtown, not just people that are downtown business owners, but people that live on the north side of Blue Springs or people that come to Blue Springs for work every day. What are things that could be drawing them to visit our downtown? So, the overall program agenda presents a basic framework that orients the readers to the objectives of the plan as expressed through the public input process. So, there is a development agenda, a community agenda, and then a functional agenda, and those are all kind of outlined in the document. So, those kind of get broken out into the area strategies. So, there are five different area strategies that are documented in the plan, and those are the railside area, the yard area, the core area, East Main area, and then Central Park. And then those are kind of shown here on this map, and they're color-coded, where those are located within the downtown area. And those are the five main areas that I discussed previously. So, in each section, there's some challenges that are identified. There are some solutions that are identified, and then there's kind of implementation next steps. And so, the solutions that are identified carry through to the implementation section. And so, there are tangible things that the city can be doing to implement some of the challenges that we see in, that the consultant saw. So, this is the railside area, and so this is the area that would be on the corner of Fifteenth and Main where...
Excuse me, Ms. Elbert.
Sure.
Is there any way you can expand the verbiage, the letters on the map here? Can you make that larger?
Yeah, I can zoom it in, but I'll have to kind of scroll around the document.
Thank you.
Can you read that a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, so, like I was saying, the area in this railside area part of, in correlation to where it is downtown, it's Fifteenth and Main, and so it's where there is a church that's on the corner. And so, some of the possible solutions that were identified, and to kind of look at broad scope, all these things are concepts that are identified in this plan. There's nothing that's saying that the city is gonna implement all of these things that are identified. Things can change. This plan can evolve over time based on priorities or funding or things like that. But these are the things that came out of our planning process based on, you know, feedback that we got from the community and things like that. So, we, there is a possible relocation of the community garden identified, of a trail that can connect to downtown, downtown to the high school campus over to the west. This shows a variety of different housing and different densities. A mini park, a possible reuse of the School of Economics could potentially be used as a farmer's market space, upgrading Fourteenth Street. It's showing a potential use of the existing church sanctuary, turning it into a performing arts space, adaptive reuse and turning that into residential on the two other portions of the old church, and then the one that's right at the corner of Fifteenth and Main, trying to do an adaptive reuse, trying to keep some of the cool historic features of that church. The red portion here and in the plan and all of these sections, it's color-coded, and it shows, you know, what kind of use correlates to what color. And so, this is mixed-use retail here, upgrading some parking and some landscaping. So, that one is for the railside area. And I'll kind of zoom in on each of those areas so you guys can read those words better. After this presentation, that's included in your packet, is the entire document. So, you have that electronically as well, and so you can really zoom in. There's other renderings and things that I didn't include in this presentation that were shown at a lot of the public meetings as well. And so, those are also included in the full document, and that's available on the city's website as well. So, this area is called the Yard Solutions, the Yard Area. So, this is where the old lumberyard used to be. And going from south to north, there's a mixed-use property here that, oh, this is connecting across the street to Main. So, this is what was previously identified on the rail yard site. New commercial on the existing city maintenance building that was identified, upgrading Fourteenth Street, and so that'll connect north to south to the site on the other side of Main Street. Some townhome development, a multifamily housing development could be anywhere from three to five stories. It kind of depends on what the market will support at that time that that's developed. Some parking that's adjacent to that as well, and then commercial storefronts along Main Street to kind of carry that down Main Street. The next area is the Core Area. So, this is between Thirteenth, I think, and, or Twelfth, Eleventh, and then down to Tenth and Main. So, some things that are identified here talk about a parking garage or a parking deck, what that will have at grade entrances. And part of that, where we can utilize the topography is kind of what the consultants were thinking with that. Activating the rear of some of those buildings and upgrading Oak Street, doing some facade improvements, upgrading the rear parking lot, and that'd be to the building just adjacent to where we're located this evening. Updating the parking lot just to the east of that, just to kind of orient people towards downtown. A lot of, throughout the planning process, we heard that parking downtown is a big issue. And through a lot of the research that the consultants did, it's not necessarily a lack of parking, but it's making people aware that there is more public parking available. So, looking at that parking lot and kind of orienting people towards downtown was something that they saw as a good way to kind of make people more aware, as well as landscaping that area, upgrading a gap that are between kind of the Chamber Building and right adjacent to that and kind of making it a pretty walkway. And then doing some redevelopment here just to the north of that. A little bit further north, too, is some new multifamily development that has been identified. Does anyone have questions so far? Okay. So, the next area that's been identified is called the East Main, and that goes all the way towards the Seven Highway boundary on the east side. So, some of the things that have been looked at here is the addition of a building between eight oh seven and eight oh nine Main Street. There's kind of a gap there, and where that's developed currently. Some new small office development, some improvements to the gateway that we have to enter the east side from the east to downtown. A lot of what we heard throughout this process was, people don't necessarily know that downtown is right there when they're driving quickly down Seven Highway. So, yes, we do have these pretty gateways, but they're a little bit off of there. So, doing some landscaping and something to kind of draw people downtown so that they know what's, where it's at for those that, you know, are living here in the community and maybe passing through. So, enhancing some parking and pedestrian access. A proposed boutique hotel or multifamily housing has been proposed on this red site, some alley cooperative private parking, and then potentially a reuse of the Masonic Temple. And then this, and then the last one is Central Park area solutions. So, there were three different solutions that were identified, but once we started talking internally with park staff, they thought that the civic-oriented design would be a lot better. So, a lot of people don't know that Central Park is so close to downtown and doing some upgrades there to really activate that space, getting people to use the park more as a public space. So, they kind of designed, there was a landscape architect on the consultant's team, and so they did some designs at what could be done to upgrade Central Park. And then, some of those things include a walking trail and an amphithe, or some public art. There's a plaza and a water feature and a playground. And so, just connecting it to the neighborhood is something that, they saw as something that was an opportunity that we could capitalize on in the future. So, another, the next part talks about strategies. So, mobility was a big thing that they looked at. And so, downtown doesn't just need to be just on car traffic. It needs to be, how can we improve it on foot traffic and bike traffic and things like that? So, creating linkages, the high school and the Career Innovation Center linking to down, or to Central Park, completing the sidewalk network, having district parking and signage. So, that was something that, when I was talking about people, it's a perceived lack of parking. Part of that, too, could be adding signage so people know where public parking is located at and how close it is to where their destination is. District gateways, implementing an active transportation plan, parking strategies, and then improvements to the streetscape. So, this map kind of shows some mobility, things that could be upgraded in downtown. And this looks at new parking, redesigning parking lots. They also proposed ninety-minute parking on those couple blocks on Main Street to hopefully get that traffic to turn over quicker. So, that was something that they proposed within the plan. There's also some neighborhood strategies that were identified. Downtown does not live in isolation. The plan presents existing programs that can help stabilize and improve the surrounding neighborhoods. Some of the things that can be done to help get to that is some land use policies, property maintenance, rehabilitation, infill development, home conversions, and then utilizing the M C R C tax credit or tax payment program that we have here at the city. This shows some facade improvements that can be done here downtown. That was something else they also identified in the plan. And then, the last part talks about implementation. So, when I talked about each of those areas within the plan, there are solutions that are identified, and then the implementation directly connects to those solutions. So, there is a schedule in terms of timeline. So, they're either less than three years, three to ten, or ten years in the future. And then it identifies who would be in charge of implementing those if it's a public. So, that'd be city. If it's a private thing, or if it could be a combination of a public and private process. And I think that is it. Did I miss anything, Mike? Okay. Do you guys have any questions? Comments, concerns?
Commissioner Roar.
So, I understand the, you know, when developers come in, they're gonna pay for, you know, structures and apartments, stuff like that. So, does the city have a price tag on this yet of what they're going to do over three to ten years?
Sure. So, I think, once this is adopted by council, I think that's when those next step conversations will develop in terms of which of those areas the city wants to focus on implementing. So, we're not really there yet in terms of who's gonna be paying for what. But in the plan, under the implementation, they kind of give rough estimates of how much things could cost. And so, that's just kind of a baseline for the city to be able to budget if it's something that we're going to take on or not.
But the city, at this time, this is just a planning document. It will help influence future budgets and capital improvement budgets that are approved by the city council.
Right.
But at this time, there is not a set earmarked amount per year or anything like that. This is just kind of that first step.
Yep.
So, will this be, if it's approved by the council, will this be set in stone for whatever they approve that they're gonna go forward with some of these projects?
They may.
No, there, nothing will be set in stone. It'll just be the guiding document by which development in downtown or capital improvements in downtown are reviewed or are looked at against or compared to to see if they're meeting the goals in this. But even a comprehensive plan or any large, long-term planning document is nothing set in stone, per se. It's a guiding document to help the private development community understand what the city's wants and goals are, and also a guiding document for elected officials, city council members, and the mayor to how they want to allocate funds and do capital improvement projects. So, and then how those two entities work together. So, this would be the guiding document specifically for downtown that would be adopted moving forward.
So, could more projects be added to this at some point?
Of course. This is, you know, a lot of this plan is conceptual in nature. There are some properties where it shows a parking garage and, for way, or by way of example. And I think the takeaway is that there needs to be more parking downtown and that structured parking may be one of the solutions that can be looked at. It may not, you know, it may be shown on one property in this plan, but the idea being, there should be an inclusion of something like that somewhere in downtown. And if, long-term plans like this never really develop exactly to how the plan was drawn out because we have to work with private property owners. We have to work with developers. We have to work with capital budgets and limited budgets that the city does have. And all of those work together to, you know, eventually lead to what does get built. So, other projects could be added to this. Some of the projects may never come to fruition, as we saw with the last downtown plan that was done in two thousand and six. There were a lot of those elements that did come to fruition, like the gateway arches, some city code amendments, like our downtown review board was created out of that. There were some other things that didn't quite happen or maybe changed a little bit over time because that original plan called for a big town square with a revamped city hall, brand-new city hall, Justice Center, things of that nature, and didn't quite come to fruition to a T like described in the plan. But the city hall did, or the city did redo the Public Safety Building. The city did do, redo city hall and has done some other things. And so, I think a lot of the concepts will be there going forward, and I think the ideas that are in this plan are what are most important. And the concepts drawn are for, you know, they're concepts. We're not trying to do a block-by-block prescriptive zoning document. We're saying this is the only thing, this is not a development plan. This is not a Site Plan Design Review that you're used to seeing. This is not a PD concept plan or a general development plan. This is even more zoomed out of that. So, that's kind of the...
So, for the record, the RFP was submitted to the consulting company, and that company is somebody that we used previously back in two thousand and seven, correct?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it the same consulting company we used in the past?
We've used them for another planning document, but they didn't do the previous downtown master plan.
Okay.
Yep.
You mentioned that the master plan was completed. Was it completed or is it continued from two thousand and seven? Did you do everything that in the past plan that you sought out to do?
Well, not everything was done. To reiterate what Mike said, some of the goals and the ideas have changed over time. And so, the city, you know, a lot of those concepts did get implemented, but not everything got implemented. And not every plan gets completely implemented how it's written, how it's presented initially. Things evolve over time. Priorities change, funding changes, properties change, hands and who wants to work together. So, yes and no.
I have a question, Chair.
Question.
How often does the city have to do a master plan? Are they required every ten years, or is it just something, what implement?
I don't think there's a mandate in the code for downtown, for these kinds of specific plans. You know, it's kind of thought every twenty years or so. But there isn't a specific mandate within the state statutes of how often we want to do it. I think that, you know, we're just at a good point where we have some good energy downtown. We've kind of realized that a lot of the things from the previous plan were accomplished, and so we're just kind of looking for a new vision moving forward.
Just hopeful for, that a few of these would be implemented.
Absolutely.
But nothing is guaranteed and nothing is required.
For sure. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Elbert, I understand what you said about the amount of people that you used on the survey and that came out to look at different things. How many, what's the population of Blue Springs?
Almost sixty thousand.
And how many people would you say came out to this event to make a decision on what's going to be implemented here?
I mean, there were multiple events, but I would say between the people that came to open houses and then the people that were at all the stakeholder meetings, there were a couple hundred people total that participated.
So, and with the finality of the decisions that may be made here, is there gonna be another consultation with the public, more surveys that go out to ask if they're happy with what you've implemented in the future, or is the decision...
I'm not quite sure what next steps would be.
Well, the next step will be that this will be presented to the city council on Monday, March eighteenth. There will be a public hearing. So, anybody in the city who wishes to speak on this prior to the adoption or not adoption by city council, there is a public hearing on March eighteenth for this.
Yeah, I kind of concur with Commissioner Roar about the financial decision of it. How do you implement these, make these decisions without knowing the cost of what it's gonna take to implement these different projects? They sound good. Aesthetically, it looks good on paper, but the feasibility and reality of it is another thing.
Well, I think part of that is, you know, the, those that decide, you know, there's gonna be some meetings that are gonna talk about, you know, what things are a higher priority than others. And so, I think what's important to staff is getting the public's trust that we're doing something. So, I'm not quite sure what things are gonna fall into line in terms of implementation. I don't know if a big project will be first. I'm not the one that makes those decisions, but I think, you know, engaging the public, letting them see, they came to all these meetings, they participated, we heard their opinions, and we want to implement some of these things.
Yes, because cities downtown is the heart of the city.
Absolutely.
All of the districts should have some kind of input there. Because I think there would be some concerns because, for instance, how Central Park might look. You said there's three different variations that are possible. Who would make that final decision? And another example for the performing arts, would you add a cultural center to that or some type of museum so we could get the true history of Blue Springs, where it was and where it's going? Something like that.
Sure. Those are great ideas.
Any more questions from the commission? Commissioner Roar.
Back to my funding. Okay, so it'll probably pass by the council, I understand that. And then after that, a couple of these things would be implemented just because it's time to move forward with them. So, somehow the city had to think about the funding. If we start some of these things, where is the funding coming from right off that? Not unless you got a bank account that already have all this money in there that's been saving up. That's the part I don't understand. I mean, if it takes off and you do parking lots and the parks and down, you know, going through the downtown area or refacing some of those buildings, I mean, right away, where's all that funding just show up?
So, not all of these things are publicly owned either. Some of the things that are in the implementation are public projects that the city maybe owns the property, but some are privately owned. So, we're hoping that some of these things will kind of spur others, and so it wouldn't be the city doing all of these projects anyway.
One of the primary goals when we started, the idea of redoing the downtown plan was the outdated, or two of the main ideas. One was the outdated factor of the previous plan. Previous plan from two thousand and six was entirely based upon the idea of commuter rail coming to Blue Springs. I think we've seen over the last twenty years that that is not likely going to happen any time in the near future. But the entire downtown master plan was almost based upon there being a commuter rail stop at essentially East Forty, the lumberyard and Main Street. And that has not come to fruition. And so, it now is a good time to kind of take a new look at the downtown area and see what it can be without a transit stop. The second main driver was the city receives requests, the city council receives requests all the time and public feedback and business feedback for more reinvestment in downtown without really any guidance about how to do that and what comes first and what are some strategies to achieve that reinvestment in downtown. And what a plan does is it helps set priorities and then some achievable action steps as well as some market-based scenarios to really look at, how do we reinvest in downtown? What are the best returns on investment? What city public dollars could be invested that would then have the best response from... response from the private development market? And also looking at some of the market realities about um uh for example, if people really want to see an increased amount of retail or more restaurants or more shops in downtown, this plan aims to look at, well, what's gonna help cause that to happen? And is it the influx or the addition of new residential units to bring more people downtown? Um and how many units can downtown viable or realistically um be developed with? Um and that's what one of the main goals of the plan that we talked about um with council and with the consultants. And it became clear during our many public meetings was wanting a plan that was realistic and that could be achieved. That wasn't too ambitious, but also didn't um kind of sell the opportunity too short either. And so I think the plan that's been presented um is is a good mix of achievable ideas at a scale that is realistic. And so that's what's been brought before you this evening and also will be presented to the council is something that in the future will he- help guide um financial decisions, land use decisions, development decisions um based upon feedback from the community, feedback from businesses, feedback from property owners, and also help drive some of those financial decisions about where do we pull money from to do this. Funding sources um are identified in the plan as well as a potential. Um it's in one of the implementation steps. Um there's always the city's general fund. Uh the downtown does have a community improvement district that helps uh with um improvements in services along Main Street. Uh there's a uh there's an incentive tax district over the downtown, the Main Center Redevelopment Corporation, MCRC um is has a boundary within downtown. So there are all these tools that are in place. And this plan helps to look at what are some of the best funding mechanisms that can be used as well as, you know, give, you know, everybody an idea of what what next steps or what um priorities could be the next step uh for the city to undertake.
So Mr. Mallon, a question, another question for you. Um if I recall, I could be wrong, I think in uh city council meeting back in twenty twenty-one, I think the current uh city manager back then made a comment to the council that it was time to uh implement a new uh comprehensive plan. And I think it took off then. And that happened in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-three, you guys have created a new plan and we're almost not quite a year into twenty twenty-four with this plan. So uh I'm wondering what the what the rush is to approve it. And if you just mentioned, there's some more discussions to be had. I'm concerned about a comment you just made about transit. We haven't really heard much about the improvement of that. Uh talked about the current situation, whether we can approve upon the transit situation instead of pulling. There might be some different programs and ideas we can look at. And we could have some some teams come out and talk to the city about that. I think there's there's some incentives to be made. There's federal money, state money that's available to the city that there's a possibility you could make some improvements. But I already hear you talking about pulling that out and having conversations in terms of that. So uh I'm just wondering, is there more things we can look at before we make these decisions? Or does it have to be made right away at the next city council meeting?
Our goal is to have this before city council, at city council at the next meeting. Um we also want this to be a living plan, plan. And I think it does stay in the implementation steps to review um the progress of the plan goals and implementation steps every few years. So there is nothing that says that this is going to be the only version of the plan that lasts for the next fifteen years. Plan, changes get made to plan all the time. And the city will be undertaking a new comprehensive planning process beginning this year. Um that will likely start in the summer or early fall of this year and will run through the remainder of two thousand and twenty-four uh into two thousand and twenty-five. So um and as part of the last comprehensive plan that was done in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, there were a lot of additional plans that were made over time. So plans aren't static in nature. Um they grow and can be changed um as, you know, dynamics and needs change throughout the city.
Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Stoltenberg.
Um it was my understanding, I've received many, many emails throughout this process, that people could attend these meetings. And so am I thinking correctly that, let's say that city council approves? Again, this is not saying we're gonna implement this. This is just saying, we approve what you've done and we'll take these all into consideration. But again, let's say that they like something of this plan and um and they need on it. Again, you're gonna have input on that, right? So you're continuing to have input all the way through the process.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's, you are correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the commission?
Um.
I have a question and I'll also propose it as my idea and hope uh for downtown Blue Springs. Having lived here on and off for many decades, um I can remember back twenty, twenty-two years ago when I was involved with and chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, the struggle for the downtown Blue Springs area has been real and it's been alive for a long time. Um I love a lot of the ideas placed in here and it'd be a good guiding document for the leadership to follow of our city. I'm curious how much involvement in the meetings um included actual business owners and stakeholders of downtown businesses in Blue Springs. That's the question that uh I'm curious of. And to follow on that, I would hope that in the future, uh these are a lot of tremendous and also appear to be quite expensive ideas. And I think it is great to have this guiding document leading us in an idea fashion. I would hope that a big emphasis would be placed by the council and the mayor and future council and mayors to place a significant high prevalence on business development, continued business development in downtown Blue Springs. Personally, as a citizen, I I feel to think more that investing in our current businesses and future businesses instead of structures, um leading with revenue is smarter than leading with structures in hopes that they will then come. So I'm just saying this publicly in hopes that it may be heard by our leaders. That's that's just my two cents about how I see a an additional approach would be led along with this document that the leadership really continues to place an emphasis because what I've heard for decades and decades is there's nowhere to go in downtown Blue Springs. And we've had significant growth with a couple big restaurants and the brewery and and dining. But I I I think that the continued desire for a lot of residents and friends that I know uh still would like to see more places to dine and more uh more places to have fun type of of structures in in businesses. So I just hope that there's an emphasis that will be put on business development and enhancement, um perhaps more so than what has been, along with a lot of these guiding principles. These are from um a corporate structure that 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 they do this probably, you know, a hundred and fifty times a year. And I know they come into town and I've been involved in lots of these over the years and they get to know us and all. But I I would again just uh reemphasize one more time, my hope is that they really place a heavy emphasis on the businesses here, the people that have already put their life savings in businesses and and retail and and dining here in downtown Blue Springs. Cause I believe uh that is the future for our downtown Blue Springs. So and then I'll let you answer about how many businesses.
Yeah, definitely. So throughout our stakeholder meetings, we did have a specific meeting just for downtown business owners. Um so several of them were invited. The chamber had a meeting, so they kind of represented the larger business community. But we had a lot of involvement with different stakeholders um that were business owners downtown throughout the whole process. And they didn't just come to the stakeholder meeting. Some of them came to the open houses. We use local companies that are downtown to cater some of our downtown events. Um so, you know, we're engaging with those business owners as well. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the commission?
Couple of comments, Chair.
Mr. Mallon.
Um congratulations, number one. I know the RFP process is not an easy one to put together, but it it's well done. Um and I appreciate that for thinking, I think it's attainable and achievable in Blue Springs. Uh just a couple of tremendous master plan. Um whatever we can do to keep the momentum going, fantastic. And just thank you, that just ultimately thank you for putting it together. That's all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, staff, and thank you, commission. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Mallon will present the February twenty twenty-fourth community development report.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the February monthly report. Um are there any questions before I get into it? It's it's really kind of more of a continuation from January in terms of permit numbers. Um really um kind of on pace with what we did in January, also with what we did last year. Um and generally speaking, we've we've had a little bit more construction, square footage activity. Um construction costs a little bit down. Um our inspection numbers are pretty high this year. Um I think that has to do with some of our larger um multifamily buildings that we have. Still going, well, one of them is, I believe, finally finished. The the Edison should be all signed off. I know it looks like it's been done for a long time, but um the outsides of those buildings get done first and then they go through and do the insides. And so, um but a lot of the inspections also have been taking place on the Calamar Building, which is over off of Coronado. Um that had to be torn down and then rebuilt. So single-family building permits uh so far this year, uh again, are on pace, just a little bit flip-flopped with last year in terms of January and February. Code enforcement activity um is down a little bit uh from twenty twenty-four. Uh the majority of the cases, again, are the public health, safety, welfare, building and construction. Have not had a lot of sign code violations. Lot of trash and building without a permit. Planning case, um so things that have come before the planning commission that ultimately went to city council. The Redwood Blue Springs, the um over there off of Wyatt and Seven Highway that the planning commission recommended approval was ultimately denied by city council. Uh the Lucky Time Dog Wash um over off of Forty Highway was approved by city council, as was the Brittany Hill Middle School, uh the Blue Springs School District, Barto Admin Plat, the CJC Plat. And um those were it. Those were the only ones that went to city council. Uh and there were no city administrative approvals. Uh signed permit numbers have been down. Uh in Feb- were down in February compared to last year. So that's kind of a summary of our February. Any questions?
Do we know why the city council denied Redwood? Do you remember that? I know it says denial in there. You may not remember the specifics.
Uh the, and I paraphrasing, I don't want to um purport to be speaking on behalf of any one single city council member, but um the general consensus that that I pulled away was um they had had the first phase approved uh a number of years ago and were hesitant to approve the second phase of it without the first phase having begun construction.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallon.
Thank you. And oh, we would like to get your picture at the conclusion of our meeting tonight.
Does the staff have any other business?
We do not.
Does the commission have any other business? If there is no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stoltenberg. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Roar. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Okay, before we.